It's the invocation. Everybody could please stand, Pastor Tanner?
Let us pray. Father, today, you tell us in your word, in your holy word, that's a day that you have made. And we're thankful. We're thankful, Father, today, that we can find such freedom in our relationship with Jesus Christ, with you. And today, Father, as I speak that, I speak freedom over each heart here because of what you have done on the cross and through the resurrection of the Lord Jesus Christ. And I speak that freedom and peace and grace and mercy into this meeting today, into our hearts, that we feel your presence and sense you, the one that is for us and not against us, that one that wants to work in our lives and help us to see things that are righteous and holy and just. And I give you praise and glory today, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looks like everybody's here. Just trying to get the computer straightened out to reflect that. Okay. Roll call's been taken electronically. Everybody's here. Thirteen members present, absent zero. Communications and announcements. Does anybody on the board have any communications or announcements? Seeing none? Next up is public comments. Just like to remind everybody that person speaking at the podium has two minutes for a non-agenda item, three minutes for an agenda item, and ask that you refrain from responding to anything that is said. This is a time for the public to give their comment within decorum standards, but we're just supposed to listen. Having said that, the only one that signed up is Jenny Strobel. Would come up, please?
Biggest land grab in Wisconsin history is set to expire this year after thirty-six years of dangling grants as carrots on a stick in front of local and state governments and the DNR. I hope you look at the resolution for Noel's Nelson stewardship program very carefully. The forestry committee decided to pass it on with the main excuse that whether they liked it or not, they thought the whole board should decide. These grants are used to purchase land, take it off the tax rule, and commit the county taxpayers to pay for perpetual care dictated by the DNR on that land. The strings attached to the Noel's Nelson stewardship program include caring for this land forever under the thumb of the DNR. This has given the DNR more control over the county and the state, more government land and higher taxes. Not only government, but extremist environmental groups and the DNR are allowed to write grants to buy land with this program. Years ago, during committee discussions that I attended, Ron Keikinen often suggested using the stewardship fund. That was what people called it then. It's not a fund, it's tax money. I talked to Ron and explained what it was used for. He looked it up, found out I was right, and I never heard him mention it again. Now, its use in Price County has escalated again. The amount put in this program is decided in every state budget. All the groups that don't want private ownership of land send their lobbyists to the legislators' offices and to the joint finance committee public hearings to have more money put in. I've attended a lot of these. The conservative Republican legislators who know what this has been, I have been trying to lower the amount in the budget. Governor Evers is trying to raise it. He started at one billion. Years ago, even before the DNR brought all the land along the Bruel in the Fox River Valley, over forty percent of Wisconsin was government-controlled. What do you think that does to property taxes? The Noel's Nelson stewardship program has survived far too long already. Even if it expires this year, they will still have the use of it to abuse landowners with it until the end of 2026. Please, no, don't vote for this. This is not free money. And by the way, Price County is a targeted area. They want to keep this really rural. They don't want people living here.
Thank you, Ginny. That's time.
Okay, nobody else signed up? I pulled the sheet about two minutes before the meeting started. Is there anybody else that would like to say something? Mr. Mattson? Just remember, two minutes for non-agenda.
Yeah, it's non-agenda. My name is Waldemar Mattson. My name is Waldemar Mattson. I live here in Phillips District 11. I wasn't able to attend the last law enforcement committee meeting because I was sick, but I would have liked to be here, and I understand that you guys kept in ordinance. So my question to the county board, and you're not allowed to answer, is, is how do you make ordinances to make things illegal when you won't even force the sheriff's department to uphold laws that have been on the books since 1848, like adultery? That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody online? Star six, if you'd like to make a comment? Hearing none? Okay, we'll move on to presentations. Employee recognitions. Laura.
Good morning.
Morning.
We have a number of employee anniversaries coming up in the month of June, and so I'm very excited to give them some recognition. And we do have some in the audience with us today, so as I call you, if you want to stand up, then they'll know who you are. So starting out, for one year in June, we have Ida Guzzi, who is a corrections officer and civilian dispatcher. She's been here since June 3 of last year. Oakley Palacek, our real property lister, also celebrates on June 3. Kathy Burish, Health and Human Services Assistant, her anniversary was on the 10th. Trin Van de Bogert is the Child Support Director, and she will celebrate on June 18. I, me, I get to recognize myself, I guess. I will celebrate at the end of the month on the 26th. Then moving on, we have a 10-year to celebrate, and that is Bob Hawn, who is the Sheriff's Office Chief Deputy. He will celebrate on June 23. And then on June 26, we are celebrating a big 25 years for Shana Remarkowitz, who is the Behavioral Health Services Unit Supervisor. So let's give them all a big round of applause. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura, and thank all you employees for your good work. Next item, approval of the minutes from the May 20, 2025 meeting. Looking for a motion to approve. Motion by Palacek, second by Hodeck. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, go ahead and vote for approval.
And the minutes passed thirteen yes, zero no.
Okay, moving on. Resolutions. First resolution. Number one, resolution in support of reauthorization of state funding for Noel's Nelson stewardship program. This came from the Forestry Department, looking for a motion to approve. Motion by Warko. Do we have a second? Second by Hodeck. Okay, I'll bring it up for discussion. First, I'll read it now, therefore. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Price County Board of Supervisors does hereby express to the northern, excuse me, express to the Wisconsin Legislature and governor our full support for the reauthorization of the Noel's Nelson stewardship program and request that sufficient funding be allocated to support projects over the next 10-year period. Anybody have any comments? Steven.
Is this resolution good for 10 years? It says the next 10-year period. And then we go through this again?
Mr. Halsner, do you have an answer on that? Nick, do you know anything about it?
Sure. The program gets re-looked at each by any, or 10-year period. So what this is, is there are several counties across the state that have used this program, including ourselves, over the years, that originally there was $100 million asked by the governor's office in this budget year. It was removed. It had been 33.5 million, I believe, for the last several years. About eight, 10 years ago, it was $89 million, so it has been reduced over the last 10-year period. We, as a county, have used it, I believe, one time in my tenure for purchasing a property, and that was the Ram property. So if you guys were on the board at that time, what the Ram property was, was out on W, right at the edge of the county. Price County owned, it's a large chunk. I can't remember, it was 300 or 600 acres that was landlocked for the most part. And there was a property that came up for sale that was 220s long, so 40 total acres, but it was 20 lengths by whatever, smaller. So it was two sections that had two 20-acre properties that allowed us to create a driveway or an entranceway into that large portion. So this Noel's Nelson stewardship grant was used to purchase that property, which gave access to everybody, citizens, us for logging directly to that chunk. That's the one time we used it for property that I'm aware of, but in general, we use this almost yearly when it comes to projects. So we used it to do the boat landing out at Solberg. We use it for trails, whether it's ATV, four-wheeler, snowmobile ATV. So it's used for more than just land purchasing. It's used for maintenance of property.
Mr. Koppish.
Yeah, Nick, what kind of numbers are we talking about with the reauthorization? How much are they looking at?
I, from what I've heard at the legislative level, like, so Evers put in 100 million, that got taken out right away because that was up from the 33.5. What I'm hearing is it's going to end up at that $30 million mark again in general.
Which is where it's been?
Correct, for three, four years now.
Okay.
Mr. Brecker.
So this resolution is just us saying we're supporting this stewardship program. And my second question, I guess, would be, is there a way to know the fiscal impact of the residents of Price County to do this?
So Joe talked a little bit about this at the forestry meeting. So yes, first question is, this is just saying, as a county, we support that there's something in there. We're not telling it to be 100 million. We're not telling it to be for the purchase of land. We're saying, we believe that this is a program that is something that we can use. As far as what Joe brought up is where we would have to wait and see what happens is, so the trail maintenance, the trail access, those type of dollars that we use on a yearly basis, they could still be available, but they would have to go through a whole legislative process to be put in a different pool of money or come from a different area. So we use it through the Noel's Nelson. There may be other access. It just may take a while for legislators to realize what changes need to be done. I can't, he brought, do you remember, Joe? He brought up, it was like 20,000. It wasn't, it wasn't a ton, but it is trail maintenance that we don't have to come up with.
So what Joe explained to us was that there was money towards bridges, you know, on snowmobile trails, the snowmobile trail maintenance fund comes, some of that money comes out of there. There's other food plot funds and different, different, you know, little DNR type of grants that we put in for throughout the year that, that, you know, as far as purchasing land goes, that Ram property would have been the only one, but that came to the full board for a vote before that happened. So, I mean, it's not like we're giving à la carte to anybody to just go ahead and do what we want. It's still, still going to come back to the board for a vote.
In past practices, other than that one property, we haven't used it for property purchase or taking property off the land.
Only one I'm aware of, it may have, in years, many years past, it may have been used, but it's the only one.
And although as a county, we typically don't buy land with this funding, other counties probably do. So I mean, there's something to think about.
What I don't know is, does this give the DNR the authority to utilize this money to come in here and say they wanted to buy something? I, I can't answer that question. I don't know enough about the, about it to say that, yes, the DNR could come in and say, we're going to buy all the property along the Jump River. I don't, I don't know if that's, if that's a possibility or not. But I know that anything where the county would use it, it would have to come to this full board for a vote.
I believe if, even if it's used in the county, it would have to come to the board. So like, the Bruel River, they did a project up there, but that was initiated. You know, Bayfield County was part of that, saying, hey, we want to keep this area as wildlife river frontage. So we're participating with the DNR to keep that this way. Wood County is a big one. They're doing a conservation area right now. But again, that's not what we've used it for. In the past, like you said, so for purchasing land, if something's come in front of the board, a couple times I recall where we've either traded or purchased a property, we've always looked at getting rid of another piece of property. So if it made a block better or access better, we would look at getting that piece of property, but then we'd look at something that was just a standalone 40 or standalone something, and we would dispose of that.
Try to limit the impact against tax rule.
Correct.
Sparks, Tom.
Good morning. We got a $750,000 commitment to improve the Steve Crick situation. Where did that money come from? Did it come out of here?
No, that was a earmarked one, so that was discretionary funds. I don't know if it's through the DNR, but that was something that, at the time, Governor Evers put it in as a line item, and then legislators had to agree on that project. It was like an earmarked project.
I believe the DNR is something to do with it, because we had a representative from the DNR.
They have to be part of it.
When we were talking about it initially.
A dam, but I, it was through the budget process two years ago. So we worked with Representative Green Quinn quite a bit on that. So that was like their project that they got in the budget.
Mr. Halsner.
So I got a question for Nick, and I don't know if you know the answer. I do not. So what we're saying here with this resolution today is, we support the fund. If we reject it and say we don't support the fund, does that disqualify us from all the grants? It does not.
No.
Everybody else? Yes. Jason.
I see Noel's Nelson gave the city of Park Falls $760,000 to buy up those eight lots that is underneath the Ford Bank. Is that correct, Mr. Warko? I mean, it must have went through the city council for a $760,000 investment. This is private property that the state is buying up. There's a real agenda out there that these land grabs are working their way into our county. I totally disagree with this. Ultimately, our property rights are our personal rights, and I believe they're the same thing. I don't think that the county should get into such a program as this. That's my personal opinion. So how come the county board never seen the recreation grant for that?
We have nothing to do with Park Falls.
So the municipalities are different.
Right.
Just for government entities, so they, I don't believe, in this instance that you're referring to, it's separate government entities that have to apply for, and so we don't have anything to do with it.
That's kind of what I thought too, but Nick said if it gets used within the county just a minute ago, that it would come in front of us, so.
For county purpose, not city purpose. So if we were to purchase land, if we were to do a boat landing, if we were to do trail maintenance, some of the, like, the trail maintenance stuff would go through the yearly process, but that sometimes is just a reoccurring one. But yeah, if we were to say we want to purchase 200 acres out in Brantwood, that would come through us. But if the municipality of Park Falls says, we're doing a park project, and this is a fund we have access to, we have no say in what they do.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I was more into what I got. There's diversity, equity, and inclusion in these contracts as well that are in these. So there's more reason to not get involved in this stuff.
Any further comment, discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote. Okay, everybody's forwarded.
Anna. Excuse me. Resolution 1125, in support of reauthorization of state funding for Noel's Nelson stewardship program. Passed by majority vote, nine yes or no.
Okay. Next resolution. 2024 transfer of the Highway Equipment Fund. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the amount of $125,162 be transferred from the Highway General Fund into the Highway Equipment Fund for the year 2024. Looking for a motion? Motion by Koppish. Second by Spasic. Any discussion? Nick, you want to give a brief?
We educated you on this one, so. We had a long conversation at Executive, and prior to Executive, Brian and I and Carrie sat down talking about what the numbers came from and where they came from. There is a sheet that's attached with the resolution, or it should be the next one in the packet, where this number comes from. And what it is, is we have several resolutions that the auditors carry, myself review, before this, this transfer happens. And the areas we look at are, if you sold equipment throughout the year, the cost of the use of equipment, storage. We have a big spreadsheet that Highway Department reviews every year, and it'll show, for example, truck 50 used $5,000 in gas. It ran for 1,000 hours. And in the end, you know, it was a profit of $500. So then we'll add up all the profit and loss of the equipment, and then that comes up with one of the numbers that we use towards this. All in all, it's just a matter of, do you pick this or that, whichever is the lowest of the funds? And then you, you make sure, the biggest one is they have to have $600,000 minimum of cash on hand in their fund balance. Without that, we don't do this transfer. But if they have that on hand in their fund, then we, we end up transferring to make this their, their equipment fund, have additional funds for future purchase of equipment.
Any further discussion, questions? What Nick says makes sense. It's hard to kind of follow on.
Carrie has an update on it.
Excel spreadsheet, but go ahead, Carrie.
So the last paragraph, actually, the dollar amount for transfer is actually $74,701. So the remainder of the fund after the transfer is the $125,162. So we can have Meredith cross off that $125,162 on the last paragraph and enter 74,701.
I don't know where.
Okay, do we need a motion to amend?
That's what's on ours. Oh, I see. Okay.
The therefore be it resolved line.
Yeah, the amount of 74,701 should be transferred. Yep.
I'm just going to, just for procedural purposes, I ask for a voice vote to, or motion to amend to the numbers. Motion by Warko, second by Koppish. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye, and opposed. Okay, we're back to the original motion with the new number.
Which the transfer amount, like was said, 74,701 with a total of 125.
Okay, we'll go ahead and vote.
Resolution 12-25, 2024 transfer of the Highway Equipment Fund, passed 13 yes, zero no.
Very good. Moving on. Resolution number three, 2024 transfer of the Highway Facilities Fund. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the amount of $4,186 be transferred from the Highway General Fund to Highway Facilities Fund for the year 2024. Now, this is a simple, a similar accounting bookkeeping as the previous resolution. Motion by Erickson, second by Koppish. Discussion?
So this one's similar to the other one, but it's to do with our facilities fund with a maximum of $300,000 in there. So this one, we put a top cap on. And the reason we did that is for several, several years, we had very little activity because it was, we needed to fix, you know, rain gutters, which would be $10,000. What happened over the last two years is, if you've ever gone out to the salt shed, we put up a pad or we put down a pad and put up a dome-type structure for sand salt. So over the past two years, this fund was used to do that, so we didn't use additional project or taxpayer levy. It was out of this fund that each year, we use money from the state for storing that, that product, and then a couple other mechanisms to fill it up. So right now, it's not at the maximum, so it'll take a while to start building that up to be able to do a project again with it. But it does help us keep that facility up, up and going. So we've used it for paving up on the top of the hill. We've used it for that sand salt. We used it to side the tin shed, so the silver and red area, we redid. We did it with doors, garage doors. So it works very well to keep that facility up and running.
Any questions or further discussion?
That the salt shed is 40, or the fabric shelter was 40,000?
No, I think that ended up being 200 and some thousand over two years. So it,
microphone, please.
There you go. 221 over two or three years. Jordan just remembered the number. Yep, so.
We knew you were smart, but.
Oh, yeah, it's right towards about 221,954. And that was done over a couple years. So the first phase was the pad. We did that one year, and then the second phase was the shelter area.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, go ahead and vote.
Resolution 13-25, 2024 transfer of the Highway Facilities Fund, passed 13 yes, zero no. Resolution thirteen dash twenty-five, twenty twenty-four, transfer of the highway facilities fund, passed thirteen yes, zero no.
Okay, resolution number four. Approved purchase land record software suite and sanitary slash land use permit management software suite by Transcendent Technologies. Now therefore be it resolved that the Price County Board of Supervisors approves the purchase of the land record software suite and the sanitary slash land permit management software suite by Transcendent Technologies in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Through the land information grant process contingent upon the land information council's approval of the project and the award of grant funds for this purpose with implementation plan for the twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven Price County budget years. Motion by Koppish, second by Drobnek, discussion? Do you want to give us a little overview, Nick?
Sure. So this all started a, a while back. Um, the, the, we are in part of a five county consortium with Bayfield, Washburn, Burnett and Sawyer, whoever said that, thank you. Sawyer. Uh, so we use a, a Novus product. Is so it was created a long time ago, u- utilizing our staff, their staff uh, to come up with a product. Uh, they, Bayfield houses a programmer that tries to keep up with all the changes. We also hire a third party programmer uh, as a group. So what we noticed that is every year the the legislation changes on how and what we have to put on our tax bill. We noticed um, things like the Act two thirty-five where we have to redact information of judicial um, individuals. The, the product was starting to not keep up with our needs. Uh, so Burnett County was actually the first county to kind of say, hey, consortium's done us well for a long time, but we're going to look for a product that more counties are using that works more efficiently with what we do. Uh, soon as they started looking, we started looking. We've been talking for a while, like I said. And so we looked at two products. One's called Catalyst and one's called uh, E-Tech or Transcendent. Uh, what we found was Catalyst was probably the top in the state. It's used by about half the counties, a little over half the counties for their tax collection. So it's the best of the best when it comes to tax collection. It's really easy for the treasurer's office to use. Um, so we looked at that. Ashland uses it, a couple of users around us. And then we also brought in T-Tech and talked to them. Uh, what we found with T-Tech is they're still very, very good at collecting taxes and doing that part of it. What they excel at is also working with our zoning and our real property lister. So instead of having to have three products, we can go to one product. Um, in the end, so with the T-Tech, uh, we worked with again the treasurer's office, real property list zoning. And they, they made the decision to recommend that we go with Transcendent so that the whole county could use one product rather than Catalyst and whatever the other two products we use are. Um, the problem with going with any new product, it takes a long time. So this is about a sixteen month process to transition from what we are to what we would like to do. Uh, with that, there's also how do you pay for it? So land information uh, is a, a separate council that is statutory through the counties that receives money every year to do projects that have to do with land record um, upkeep. And so we're working with that council to say, we believe this is important for your RPL. We believe this is important for zoning. Uh, your cla- tax collection, which then would fit within their, their use of their yearly funds. Um, for example, this year we use the funds to do a new flyover to do pictures that just got completed. Uh, we do corners. Um, it's a lot of survey work through that. But what we're proposing is asking them for fifty thousand dollars a year to pay for the implementation, which is about a hundred, just under a hundred thousand dollars. And then going forward, the, the three products that we currently have costs is about thirty, thirty-one thousand dollars to maintain each year. Uh, this new transcendent project, product is about a thousand dollars more. So in the end, we get a more efficient project or product for about a thousand dollars more a year. Uh, and where we're going to see the biggest efficiencies is right now, if you pay online um, for your taxes. Uh, what happens is we get a report saying Nick, property owner Nick paid for tax property, blah, blah, blah. We actually have to take that report and re-enter it into our system where the new system talks to each other. Same with the RPL, there's a lot of duplication or trying to create reports to send down to the state. This connects right to the state and just gets it done. Uh, so there's a lot of cross-using or like efficiencies that we won't be double entering, which always leads to mistakes um, and time. So that's where we came up with.
The new product sounds like it's something that would work well for us. The only thing is it's going to cost us a thousand dollars a month more to have.
Not a month, a year.
I mean, a year, I'm sorry.
Not a month, yeah.
And um, the current system is probably not going to be supported in the next few years.
Yeah, so we've heard mixed messages, but that's another reason we kind of move forward with this is because that's an independent, you know, a five county consortium. Uh, we used to have a gentleman named Ken Hebbie. A lot of you probably met him in the past. He used to be, come on site and once a week to do programming with this for each county so that you know, the needs were being heard. Uh, during his tenure, he ended up having a heart attack. And so that was kind of one of those like, oh, oh moments. What do you do when your only programmer leaves the program? So they, we ended up as a consortium, working with a new individual, his name is Dog. Um, he's out of Bayfield, so they, Bayfield hired a programmer to replace Ken Hebbie. Uh, and then we have a third party that can do programming. So it's kind of a two-phase uh, thing. So we have, we were told that, you know, Dog's looking to retire within the next five years. Uh, so that was another indication of, okay, are we going to be able to find an in, you know, individual who wants to do programming that want, can be you know, keep up with what this program is? And that, that was our concern, you know? What if Dog left yesterday tomorrow? Then we'd have, we'd, we'd, we'd make it, but it would not be good.
Thought it should improve efficiency. And uh, it'll give us a little more peace of mind as far as going forward, uh.
Yeah.
Uh, this, you know, having software that's going to work and we don't, we'll have support because this company's got.
Yeah, so right now there, we're, we're aware of twenty-seven other counties. It's mostly the west side of the state. Um, that uses this product. Burnett County chose this product. We have, so there'd be twenty-nine of us within the next two years. Uh, their team is made up of someone who used to work for zoning for a county, someone who used to be a treasurer, someone, they've, they've brought in people who understand what the end goal is, which has made their product much more seamless amongst themselves.
Is the end goal to get the entire state on this?
No, it's just an independent vendor. Um, w- we chose T-Tech, the other one's Catalyst. It's about I have a map that's fifty-fifty split, I mean, thirty, forty split.
Any further discussion?
Yep.
Mr. Hastings.
Which uh, individuals are getting their information redacted?
I had judicial individuals who hand in the paperwork. I can't tell you who's.
It's the definition of your definition of these individuals that are getting their information hidden from the public.
So Act two thirty-five is a state law. Um, they defined it as anybody who is a judge or a judicial.
Sorry, what was that? Act what?
Two thirty-five. They're also looking to expand Act two thirty-five. So right now, Act two thirty-five covers judicial members. Um, which also consists of anybody the judge appoints to be, what are they, commissioner, court commissioners? So court commissioners, judges can be redacted uh, through the system. Uh, what.
Administrators?
No.
Oh.
No, I'm not judicial in any way, so. Um, judicial, well, I am judicial. But I'm not part of the court system. So Act two thirty-five co- covers judges, court commissioners. They are looking, there's currently legislation to include election. There's a specific, election workers, election, election officials, officials. So there's a, a new act coming out that's election officials. So anybody who's ever passed or present worked at a polling place or worked with anything with a um, uh, an election would be able to redact their information from the public. So that's in legislation right now. Um, so.
Forgive me, I think it's a good question, but what, what does this have to do with the software?
So in our, through our software, so right now we can't read, like through Novus, so uh, Oakley, our real property lister. We, well, so we back up. We would get a request from a judicial member through our corp council. So we've designated our corp council to receive the paperwork that has to be given out by the regional judicial person. So they go to Anne Knoxbauer and say, I want this paperwork to redact my information. That, they fill out their paperwork. They have to list every piece of property they want redacted in Price County. So they don't have to work or live here, they could just own property here. That paperwork then would go to our corp council. Corp council then would distribute it to zoning, real property lister, treasurer, the clerk. We have a, a location for this. Those, the real property lister then would go into our tax software and we have a way to redact that information. So if you go and say, I want to look up Judge Fu- Fears property, it would, it would show he owns nothing. It wouldn't come up in the search.
I don't agree with that, not one bit.
I'm not, that's what the state has done. So if you search Judge Fears, it, it would not come up. Now, if you went and knew where he lived and clicked on his property through our mapping software, it still wouldn't show him. It would just say resident. I can't remember what. Yeah, if he was one, I'm using him as the judge if, if it's there. Um, so yeah, you could click on a property and it wouldn't show the owner if it was redacted. Um, again, we have we have to provide this through Act two thirty-five, so the, the software will, you click on it and it'll do it all for us rather than us having to go to zoning and say, okay, if someone asks about this property who owns it because they want to know what the permits were on it, that has to be redacted. Um, if someone says, I want all your plat files. So like, we, we, as a group, we looked at and said, okay, so what about all the plat books? They're already out there. I mean, you're not going to go back and redact anything. It's just going forward. It reduces the searchability of that.
Mr. Steven, do you have a question or comment?
Um, two things. I worked in election, would I qualify? And is, what is the purpose of people not wanting other people?
Yeah, so.
If he has to, but I don't, and a bunch of rich people who own land don't, what is the purpose of that?
Well, it only comes down right now to judicial individuals. So it's not, Nick can't go and say, I want my stuff redacted. That's not the law. The law is only judicial. What's coming through legislation is anybody who ever was certified election worker or any clerk or anybody who worked on an election would have the ability to do this. This all came out of um, the judge that was killed in New Jersey. So what they found during the investigation is they went on to the GIS mapping system um, in New Jersey, had printed off a map of where a judge had lived by searching for that name. It was sitting on the car seat, not the seat next, the passenger seat when they, they searched the individual's car. So they, our legislator felt that, or our judges lobbied and said, we want our information redacted. Now, small community, that's difficult, right? You know where their kids are, you know where their spouse works, you know where they have their fish fry. You go down to Milwaukee, that's a lot more difficult, right? And a lot of courthouses have, you know, parking garages that don't allow, so like a judge can get into their vehicle and out of their vehicle without being followed or seen. We have a parking lot. I mean, northern Wisconsin, you're not gonna. It, it's.
We're going to have to comply with two thirty-five, whether we have this new software or not.
Correct, and we are, if, if we.
Getting this software will make it simpler to comply, hopefully.
If we get a uh, request, we will comply with the law. Um, it's been rare around.
First two thirty-five, we can discuss that on a different day.
Yeah, we'll eventually.
On the agenda, but I mean, it was just like a sidebar that this will help make it easier to comply, right?
Yeah, it'll be way easier under this product because it streamlines it. Especially if we, if legislators pass the one for electeds, that's where we're going to probably see the most because anybody who's ever worked in election, if you own a piece of property up here or if you've worked up here, I mean, town, town of Elk has twenty people, you know, a year that are certified to do this. Well, think about a hundred year history, you're going to have a lot of potential individuals who could. The hangup that I've heard so far with legislators on the elected official one is, how do you prove who is an elected official? Because right now, the way the judicial one works is you have to go to the judicial regional judge, I don't know what her official chief judge of the region, which is Anne Knoxbauer, and say, I want to do this. She can certify you are a court commissioner or a judge. If it's elections, is it going to the clerk and saying, I want this paper to say that I am? I we, we have not had to figure this out yet. So that's in legislation's hands.
Any further discussion regarding this uh, resolution? Okay, call for a vote.
Resolution fourteen dash twenty-five to approve the purchase of land record software suite and sanitary land use permit management software suite by Transcendent Technologies passed. Twelve yes and one no.
Okay, moving on, appointments.
Mr. Chair, could I make, could I make a comment, please?
Sure.
Would it be possible for you to ask the people in the general area to please not be whispering and talking? It's very distracting.
Okay. You heard the request? I asked that, that be uh.
Thank you. Thank you.
I couldn't hear, I can't hear him from here, sorry.
I know, but I certainly hear it all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, next on the agenda is appointments. You have them listed on the uh, agenda. Unless you want me to, I don't believe I need to read them all, but I am going to, unless there's a, uh, some kind of a opposition, I'm going to call for a voice vote to approve these appointments. Oh, we have it on our screen, so we'll go ahead and ask for a motion. I did, I thought it was voice, but. Motion by Erickson. Second by Spasic. Any discussion?
So these ones are just unique, so everybody knows, in the sense that these are a three-year term through the Health and Human Services Board. It rotates um, which ones are up on that three-year term. So it's a little different than like each two-year election, we set that Health and Human Services Board. The ones that are at the two-year mark when there's an election are those who don't win their seat back. So we've had some where we appoint during the two-year election period, but otherwise these ones are on a three-year rotation in the middle of our election term. It's a weird, it's how the Health and Human Services Board is set up statutorily.
Any further discussion? Okay, the abortion and second were on the computer, but it is going to be a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And opposed. Motion carried. Next up, miscellaneous, amend county outdoor recreation plan, CORP, to include town of Bayfield and city of Park Falls projects. Now, this basically has to do with uh, getting these uh, projects from Bayfield and Park Falls on the plan because they need to be included on the plan to be able for funding. Basically, that's it in a nutshell. We're not committing to anything. We're just putting them on the plan and it's, the plan is a wish list. From my understanding, you want to add anything, Nick?
Y- yeah, if, if we don't include them on our plan, they would be required to make their own plan. So it's more efficient for the municipalities to come to us. Like, we've had Prentis come to us, Ogum, whoever. They come to us and say, can we be part of the rec plan? We then update the rec plan to include projects that they're seeking uh, grants or additional funding for.
Motion by Spasic, second by Koppish. Any further discussion? This will be a computer vote, so call for the vote. Mr. Hastings, did you vote?
As I checked it.
And passed by majority vote, thirteen yes, zero no to amend the county outdoor recreation plan.
Okay, if we're going to committee to hold, see there's a representative in the audience from, I believe it's Mr. Tiffany's office. Is there anything you'd like to, even though it's not on the agenda, I know I'm, but we've got time. Everything's good? Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Hallstrand.
It affects the whole board. Our project with Bug Tussel, they were here and gave a presentation last time and they said that the project just held up because of a brown-nosed bat. So they can't do any construction in Wisconsin because of a permit. So I'm wondering if Mr. Tiffany's office can help with that a little bit and.
I, could you give it to me again?
Yeah, jamesmiller@mail. house.co.
Otherwise, I'll see you Wednesday. Well, thanks for coming in the meeting. Any other quick questions? Okay, we'll move on to, uh, committee of the hall, board chair report. Nothing new to report with Bug Tussel, uh, we're working on getting estimates for the proposed law enforcement equipment to be placed on the towers. So that, that's being worked on, but I don't have any news as far as progress on the towers, as you do, Nick.
Yeah, the only thing, other thing I'm doing right now, working, um, on with the Bug Tussel stuff is we want to get all of what they're agreeing to do for us on paper. So, um, whatever the, the location of our forty-foot antenna, you know, the type of power at the base, who's paying for power, who's paying for the building? We've been talked to a lot by Bug Tussel and we've, he's mentioned a lot of things, but I'm working, uh, on getting a, something on paper between the two parties, which will eventually come to a committee saying, this is our agreement that we, um, want to make sure we're all on the same page. So we'll, we'll see that in the next three to six months, depending on how quickly that goes.
Okay, thanks, um. Another one, uh, I've heard nothing new on carbon credits, anybody's wondering, it's still being worked on, but that's all I know. Another item, uh, I've been looking at is a need to fill the Ogma Library position on the Price County Library Committee. The, the previous, uh, representative is no longer on the Ogma Library Board, so we're working on that, that approval, that name and approval should be on the next agenda in August. Just to sign on on DEI, the Department of Health has updated their grants to comply with, uh, the, uh, executive branch, DEI executive order. And just another thing, uh, most likely see on a future board meeting, having to do with, uh, requesting the designation of the Apostle Islands as a national park. That's coming from, uh, Representative Tiffany's office. And going forward, I'll be, uh, next week going to the Northwest Regional Planning Executive, uh, meeting on June twenty-fifth. I have a meeting, uh, of the, uh, Board of Directors for, uh, WCA August, and then of course, the conference in September from WCA. Anybody else have any comments, questions, Mr. Hallstrand?
So I received an email this morning about, about bead. The bead process has all been kind of rescinded, is a, is a, the word that was used. So any awards that they had made have been rescinded and they're rewriting the rules again and gonna put it out now for September, the beginning of September. Everybody has to resubmit applications and, and, and again, will not surprise me at all if that whole pot of money just disappears.
So why the do-over?
They changed.
They want to add all technologies rather than just fiber to the home. They want to open it up so that it could be wireless, it could be fiber, it could be. Two strings that I can, I, I don't, I don't. I mean, it just, it's, it's, they said that they're going to, things like the brown-nosed bat, they're going to streamline, uh, regulations on how it could be deployed, so.
Okay. Well, hopefully the pot doesn't disappear and we get some benefit out of it eventually, but we'll wait and see. There's nothing else, uh, move on to, uh, county administrators report, twenty twenty-five financial summary slash updates. You got that in your packet?
It's in your packet, uh, we are through forty-two percent of the year. Some of the percent spent is a little higher than the forty-two percent. You know, we tend not to be like divided by twelve and this is your percentage because there are things like, uh, property insurance, your liability insurance, that's all charged out at one time, which then is a higher amount. We also had our third paycheck month was last month, so that again bumps it up. So we'll slowly see those percentages get back down to, um, the percentage of the year. The areas that we're seeing, uh, I don't want to say concern, but overages, potential overages, and we've talked about it at law enforcement and at executive, is, uh, the Sheriff's Department and jail. A lot of that comes with staffing issues and then also major events. So we've had four homicides in the last year, which creates a lot of overtime. We've had missing people, we've had, um, individuals who are out on, uh, USRA, which is military leave. We've had people out on FMLA, so every hour that's, needs to be covered by their shift is overtime. So we'll see a little bit of, again, overage in the Sheriff's Department. Uh, the other area, I was just talking to, uh, buildings and grounds this morning, Josh. What's getting frustrating and, and it, we have to do it is, is our inspections. So we used to be able to find individuals to do the inspections and sign off for them and it'd be like five hundred dollars. It was, you know, found a local person that could do it. No one locally is certified to do a lot of these things anymore. And now it's four or five thousand dollars to have somebody come in and, and do these inspections, which you have to have for insurance, you have to have for statutory reasons. So those are the things we're gonna have to start addressing is they're just not service providers.
What would it cost to like have them certified to do it?
Like the one that we talked about this morning was like something with backflow, something with our plumbing. And so, yeah, so we used to have an individual in Park Falls that was certified to do it and did all the paperwork, it was five hundred bucks. We've talked to all the local plumbers and they're like, if you find one, let us know because we need them too to sign off on our projects. So nobody wants to do it, um, locally, I, I don't know what it takes, right? I don't know if it's another year of schooling, I don't know if it's what it takes, but there's not a lot of us that need that certification either. So a local plumber going and getting it and has the school and us and maybe the hospital doesn't pay, so.
Well, maybe we should look into what it would cost or what it would take to get our.
You have to be a certified plumber.
Oh, yeah.
Like for this one. Not for, but, well, either way, the certification was, nobody has. Yeah. The one that used to, yeah. It used to be, yeah, because he was a pipe fitter. Yeah, we worked with the school and they're using Aaron's, that's who we're, we're using. But the, the problem is Jean's husband used to do it for a very reasonable, yeah, five hundred bucks and now it's five thousand. So those are the things we're just watching is those, those costs that go up because there's just not options, uh, locally. Other than that, on the general fund, we're not seeing anything jump out, go to the next page. Health and Human Services, uh, they're at forty-four percent of usage for the year. Uh, they've received fifty percent of their expected revenue, so they're doing pretty good, uh, over there. We do have a couple of high-cost placements that we're monitoring. Uh, other funds, animal control, veterans, library, airport, uh, everything's doing okay in those areas. Uh, Price County cash, we are ten percent less cash on hand this year at this time than we were last year. A lot of that's to do with, we finished up some projects, we're, we're doing well, um, with getting those finished up and out the door. We also paid off some of our loans a little earlier than we normally do, uh, just to get them off the books. We've had several individuals paying up on their back taxes, so that always helps our cash. We had an extra, you know, fifty, sixty thousand dollars come in, uh, which is fees and stuff that's already went out the door over the past three years. Price County sales tax, we had two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars so far through the year, March over March. So March last year, we had a hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred, this year we had a hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred. So we're plateauing, but we're still holding steady, so that's, that's always a positive. Stumpage, uh, for those who followed with forestry, we, we have just under, well, nine hundred thousand dollars, uh, is what we have so far. That's almost twice what we did at this time last year, so we're catching up. We had our first sale, spring sale, uh, we, what, minimum bids were like four hundred some thousand. We ended up having seven hundred thousand dollars in sales, so positive in that, that area. We do have our fall sale still to come, so then we should be able to stay within our budget, um, our expected sales budget.
And that's good news because there was, in my mind, a lot of concern about the.
The long-term.
Long-term.
Who's accepting wood, this.
Products.
Right, we're always about a year, year and a half behind, like if there's a lull because we had sold during a hot time. So they still have to cut during, you know, what, at those prices. And then you'll see the market go down and we'll start to see lower bids, which we're seeing. We're not seeing the same bids we saw two years ago, but we're still selling, uh, which keeps us within that budget. High-cost placements, children and youth, uh, last year at this time, we were only at seventy-one thousand. We're at a hundred and seventy-nine thousand already this year. You have to look at this and the behavioral health one as the same, you know, or in the same together. The behavioral health one, we had a hundred and eighty-six last year at this time, we're at a hundred and nineteen this year. And a lot of that is just how, uh, individuals get classified. So sometimes if they're youth and they're having behavioral health issues, then it can be classified under the behavioral health, which is a different, uh, funding mechanism. So this year, those individuals don't qualify for behavioral health and so they're under the children and youth. So if you combine the two, we are over budget, but not, um, a lot, uh, or not super bad at this point. The couple that we're watching, they are high-cost placements, which are like between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars a month, uh, because they're in a facilities that are high cost. The goal is about forty-five days to ninety days in those type of facilities to try to get them to a point where it's not that level of expense. Health insurance, uh, we started the year at negative two hundred and seventy-nine thousand. We did bring it up to positive in March, uh, and we're back into that negative area. We do have some money coming in from, uh, our stop loss, so that's always about six to twelve months behind. And what a stop loss is, is if I had a heart attack and it costs two hundred thousand dollars for all the surgeries and the hospital time, we as a county would be on the hook for all two hundred thousand and then our stop loss would reimburse it down to a hundred thousand. So any one individual, it's a hundred thousand dollars. But in the meantime, we're, we pay those bills, um, until the stop loss gets reimbursed. So no, no major concerns on the health insurance. Any questions?
Okay, no questions for Nick. Move on to, uh, item number three under committee of the hall, committee chair reports, administration, Mr. Workle.
I don't have a great deal to report because we haven't had a meeting since the last board meeting. Well, the only thing I can say is we did receive a notification from the deputies' union to, uh, with a request to open up contract negotiations. So I think our first meeting with them will be in August. That's all I have.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Workle? Next up, executive, that'd be me. Uh, we had an executive meeting last Thursday, where we had the treasurer's report, she wasn't unable to attend, but, uh, Nick gave us some updates, delinquent taxes and in REM is looking pretty good. There were six, uh, properties on the list for a court date, which I believe is in July, two of which it looks like, if they haven't paid already, they were going to pay by the end of the month, so that's good. So it should be down to four now. Administrator's report, which you just heard, we had that. Also heard a report from the Register of Deeds, which is something I added to our executive agenda, just so you know briefly what's going on in the, uh, Register of Deeds office. We discussed the WCA request for resolutions, uh, I haven't received any and, and the, uh, deadline to turn them in has passed. So, uh, I pretty much assume that, uh, any resolutions we would have submitted or might have submitted have already been submitted by other counties. And we'll be looking at those and, and deciding which ones we forward on to the full WCA in, uh, August at our executive committee meeting, excuse me, board directors meeting. We discussed the resolutions that were on today's agenda, uh, that came from, uh, two of them from highway transportation, obviously the one from executive and then forestry. Talked about the billing for, uh, taxes that, at the airport for the hangers. We're still trying to figure out a good system for that. We, we know what we want to do, it's just a, a little bit of, uh, confusionist because our airport layout plan does not reflect what has actually been surveyed there. So we're looking at, uh, I don't know if you want to expand on that a little bit, Nick?
Would, yeah, uh, just like Brian said, the plan and the certified survey that's on file don't line up. And that happened over years of, the certified survey was there, which originally lined up, but then people would come and say, I want a hanger, the lot could support a hanger forty by forty, but the person would come and say, I want a sixty by forty or sixty by sixty. The committee would approve it, which then would eat up two lots. But then the survey, if we go out there to survey it, the survey line runs right through the middle and we can't do a, a good legal description, uh, to get them on that BFI program. So we put money each year into the airport, uh, to do, uh, engineering for future projects because we usually have to put that upfront, so it's easier to put that money and get reimbursed over the years. So we have some funding available to do the certified survey. So I brought it to the executive committee and said, hey, do you want to move forward and clean up all the properties and get the certified map back where it should be? Which then will line up the, the airport project map, which then we can do the legal descriptions to get all this on BFI. So executive agreed that we should move forward with the project, so I'm working with, uh, our surveyor to, to line that up.
Thanks, Nick. Was it company is Quest?
Quest, Sam Cocke, onsite, uh, uh, cut key, but it's, um, there's a, his supervisor I talked to, not Cody, but anyway, yes, Sam's onsite.
Another thing we discussed is electrical panel project, I'm gonna leave details on that to Mr. Hallstrand when he gives his building and grounds report. Talked about establishing ad hoc committee to discuss the options for the opioid, opioid settlement money, which is at this time roughly a hundred and twenty thousand. We've got a, a list of what positions, not people, not names, but positions that, uh, should be included in this, uh, ad hoc committee and it was up to sixteen, I think.
Yeah, because it was local law enforcement, all the schools, yeah, sixteen. So what we'll be doing is creating a resolution for executive to review, to create an ad hoc with the list of the positions, not the people that would make up this along with kind of their general bylaws of your role is to come up with ideas, bring them to executive committee for future funding.
We also talked about, uh, or were given, uh, preview of the proposed updates to the fiscal policy handbook. We didn't make any decisions, it was given to us for, to look at and, uh, approve or make adjustments at a future meeting. Basically, we're just cleaning up the, the language and updating our current, uh, procedures to reflect what we do. Uh, and, uh, just a lot, one other side note, uh, working with the city of Phillips and I believe it's Worcester, regarding the annexation of the city property to Worcester and, and, uh, getting the supervisor districts aligned, there's, there's three residents, it's not going to affect anything really. It's just basically paperwork, as far as I know. Any questions? Okay, moving on, forestry and parks, buildings and grounds, Mr. Hallstrand.
So at our last forestry buildings ground meeting, uh, Josh was absent, he was on vacation that week. So the last I knew about the electrical panel is it was out for bids. So if there's more information since then, it has not been shared with me.
Yeah, we haven't even set him out for bid, we're, we're preparing the RFP, which is the request for proposals or bids. So it'll be a while.
So I, I would assume Josh has been working on all these, you know, maintenance inspections and, and the sidewalk, all the stuff, the road job.
My understanding, it needs to be done, but. Right now, it's working.
Well, it's working till it's not and then it'll be a crisis, so it, it absolutely needs to be addressed sooner than later, so. So forestry. So forestry, uh, Joe did send me some minutes here, a little note, but so basically forestry, we talked about the Knowles Nelson and, and yes, Ms. Robo was correct that I felt it was important to kick it to the full board rather than killing that committee. I don't think that's the right thing to do. Uh, so we did have some discussion about the Knowles Nelson uh, ordinance or resolution that we passed. Um, we talked about Steve Creek flowage and that process on that is still, we're waiting on the final engineering to get, get approved. Uh, to Steve Creek shooting range, working with the, the Westboro Sportsman's Club. We gave them the green light to continue working together on that project with no cost to the county. So that project is kind of, kind of moving along. Uh, Joe sent me, if I can get my phone to open up here, an update on Solberg Park. He said the septic system should be completed tomorrow or Thursday, depending on weather. Uh, the underground power will be completed by the end of the week, depending on weather. Uh, the gravel base will be hauled and the power and septic will be complete. Uh, the new Solberg ATV trail, uh, they, he thinks he's got a uh, workaround with the guy, but he's getting no response from, from the DNR on our permit yet. So that one's kind of just sitting on, on hold. As far as stumpage goes, he did tell me, not in this email, but that we were with receivables for stumpage. We should be near that million dollars, but I would assume things have slowed down. The four and a half inches of rain probably are not conducive to logging in Price County. So but other than that, that's all I have.
I got a question.
Sure.
The uh, capital improvement considerations included the Park Falls City Park in the forestry meeting and it's not in, in this stuff because you were amending stuff and that was highlighted in the.
That was in the miscellaneous thing that we did.
In.
In his packet.
Today's packet or in the?
Yeah, I guess what's right here.
Right here.
This thing here.
It's not yellow highlighted because that was a previous update.
Jordan's confused. This is the athletic complex. It included the city park.
Right. It, in the old one, it was already in there. So when Joe brought it to committee, it was highlighted the city park was, but that's not what was updated in this one. So that was, it's still in there in the whole plan. The updates were the red, not.
Well, there's only a few pages here. So.
Yeah, there, yeah, it's a, it's a large, it's sixty pages.
Okay, um, with the athletic complex and stuff, that's all used by this um, school. How is it possible that the Park Falls can receive grants from taxpayer dollars? And school taxpayer dollars.
The property.
City owns the property. And more people than just the school use it.
Wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be a partnership? Isn't that how they normally look at those?
Yes.
Yeah.
They share expenses.
I mean, the youth, the youth baseball fields like the, by the bus garage over here, the city owns the property for that too. But yet it's the youth baseball program that does the majority of the work, you know, and the funding. So I think it's kind of a fifty fifty deal of working together really, you know?
Anything else from Mr. Hallstrand? Okay, we'll move on to health and human services. Is there?
So there was no health and human services meeting in June, and that came to light when Sarah Soha and I were putting together the, the agenda. We were just starting the agenda and it came to light that um, at the end of April, in, in, end of May, I should say, I'm sorry. Um, I, I would no longer be chair of the committee and Bob Kopisch would no longer be vice chair. So it was a lame duck. We, we had nobody going forward. So, and we needed to come to the board first before we could come back to a meeting. So no, no meeting.
Okay. Paul, do you want to thank Dr. Daley?
I sure would like to. Dr. Daley will not be sitting on our board anymore. Um, Nick sent him a really nice letter thanking him for his services over the years, but um, since his term was over, we're moving forward with um, a different person.
So I guess my question is, going forward in the future, is this something we missed and we should have appointed or reappointed?
Last month.
Yeah, we were just.
Right.
These are all random appointments. We see it for a lot of committees. We just got to get on. We have a spreadsheet that we manage and this one just should have been at the last board meeting.
It's just change of hand of, of, of learning everything and everybody, we all kind of depended on Jean and she always brought that forward. And so none of us really had to really think about it and no, no finger pointing to Meredith whatsoever. It just was, no, no.
Yeah, we, we got a spreadsheet.
We're aware of that. We need to do this ahead of time instead of after the fact.
Right.
And after this all happened, which I appreciate any feedback and it's all positive to me for the learning process. Um, but all of the committees are now updated and we worked hard at these appointments. So we're keeping an eye on it. Thank you.
Sure, not a problem. It, it, it happens. I think what also happened several years ago was I think the reappointment came before the election. Remind me, Bob, how that came about?
Well, it used to be uh, before the end of the year. December, and then we changed the terms to coincide with new boards uh, coming on in April. So we can make those appointments uh,
After the, after the, yeah.
To the end of May. So we make the appointments in May and then it would start in June.
Right. And somehow that just, you know, those years go by. You just don't even count them.
And it wouldn't have been such a big deal if it wasn't the chair and vice chair, right? If one, if it was just one of the general members, you could have still had the meeting and moved on.
Sure, but it was like.
Kuman.
Right.
Thank you. No, and I take full accountability, but we're working on it.
But back to Dr. Daley, he was a, a nice asset to the, the board.
Yes.
The committee, yes.
And we couldn't figure out exactly how long we, we think, it's between nine and twelve years. We thought he was participated on the board, but we couldn't find his original letter that appointed him.
So like I said, Nick, Nick did write him a very nice letter thanking him for his services.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Mr. Polczek, highway and transportation committee.
Thank you. Highway report, the crew has been cutting and chipping trees and ditching on County Trunk C. They've also been working on crack filling on state highway eighty six. They've been washing bridges and changing culverts on County Trunk Highway I. Shop took delivery of a new F-150 for the highway patrol superintendent. The old truck was traded in and applied toward the purchase of the new one. It was prepped and put into service. The cat grader has been delivered by Fabic and was prepared by the shop for use. Tractors and mowers are available for summer use and all state trucks have been converted over for summer use. Our spring auction was finished on Tuesday, May thirteenth with Wisconsin surplus. And did it net us forty plus thousand, Nick?
Yeah, I think.
I thought it was like forty four thousand.
Coming to my mind, yeah.
Yeah.
Airport has been working on regular summer maintenance. They are doing grass mowing as well. Dams are all in good overall condition with all lake levels being back to full summer pool. Upcoming projects for Job's Dam brush and add gravel to the easement access on the north side. On Weamer's Dam, we replaced some of the large riprap rocks from material on hand from the pit. Prentice Dam will need some minor concrete cracks and spalls to be fixed and patched. Sailor Creek will need to have some riprap and topsoil added to fill those spots in the dike that are hard to maintain and mow. We've also purchased a new chains, chain hoist for uh, Sailor Creek. Are there any questions?
I got one and I'd been told this and forgot, but that new one fifty, are those, those trucks, those pickups like that on a uh, regular schedule for rotation or, or buying new after so many miles or so many months? Do we do?
Yeah, we rotate.
How, how do we determine uh, when we buy a new one?
Yeah, so the, it's interesting how supervisor vehicles work up there because we get uh, the state discount on a vehicle. So pretty much if you look at what you pay on the lot compared to what the government contract rate is, it's the depreciation. So we'll purchase the vehicle and our goal is after two years is to get, sell that one back and buy the new one because they're going to pay whatever the, lower the depreciation. So you get a new vehicle every two years for less than ten grand, five grand most times. So.
We're not getting new stuff just to get new stuff. There's actually methods to the madness.
Yeah, there's a ma, it's fiscally, it works smarter to rotate those because they're not being beat up on the side of the road. They're, they're just getting miles on them. So once you, if you rotate them quick enough, you're not losing more than the couple hu, thousand bucks that you're getting the next one, which is the inflation between the two year or three year period.
Okay, thanks.
I have a report from summer road school. We had an interesting uh, commissioner's round table, it's called, and they spoke on state and federal funded projects. Some of the, the high points were to keep the project simple as it goes to contract. Stress having projects shovel ready and on the shelf. And to keep the project simple, there uh, they stress staying between the shoulders to avoid buying right away. We had uh, some, an autonomous car demonstration. By the way, they're not legal in Wisconsin. And we got to ride in it. It was like a Ford airport van. And they plotted out a course around the, the uh, the grounds. And the ride was really jerky and for most of the ride, it was on the wrong side of the road. So beware. Uh, they, they stressed on uh, local road improvement projects to keep good records and have long range planning, five to 10 years out, have good plans and follow through. Paula was there and Joe was there. Do you have anything to add, either Paula or Joe?
Well, I can say I, I definitely will not get into a driverless car in a, in a long time. No desire. That was uh, even though it was the grounds, it still was like, they're on that side of the road, you know? So it was kind of interesting, but I mean, it was very, very informative. And their uh, UW sent, UW Madison has a, a, a full-fledged program going on and they're, they have areas within Madison where they are experimenting with them and, and uh, I, I'm sure it'll come to fruition somewhere, but I'm not real excited just yet. I, I like to be in control. And the gentleman who was, I mean, there was somebody sitting there. We weren't there without anybody. And so he could kind of remind, remind that. It was amazing. It was a big van. Um, and then the whole backend was all the big computers and everything. So I'm sure over the time that will become small and lightweight like our phones are nowadays compared to what they were before. So that was real enjoyable. I do want to talk about our um, our little field trip and I sent you a couple of pictures. Um, Nick? Do you see them? Are they ready? Okay, so here we are getting ready. We're going, we're going on the ducks. And we had assumed that they were picking us up at Chula Vista in buses. No, they drove up with three ducks. If you've ever been to the Wisconsin Dells and ridden on the ducks, you know, they take you through the woods and through the water and all that's kind of fun. But they picked us up right at the hotel and we were barely out of the hotel parking lot. We were actually driving by um, Mr. Baratka's um, golf station where he was selling stuff. And so here's poor Gay. This is when we're coming back. It was just pouring. It just started to pour cats and dogs. And if you know the ducks, there are no sides. There's no front. There's nothing. And she's sitting next to the edge. Look at this woman who's hiding behind the driver up there. It was just pouring and we're all saturated like that, just terribly. The funny part, if there's a funny part to it, because it was cold rain, um, was when we drove up to the, when they took us all through the Dells getting poured on, um, and it just was a driving rain and we were driving. Um, when we got to the actual site for the ducks, we all unloaded soaking and drenched. And we didn't look like that anymore. Um, they said, oh, if you want, you can stand over here and we'll take pictures. We were like, really? Nobody. I don't think anybody, anyone partaken in that at all. But then they offered if anybody wanted to go back and not take the ride. So we did because this was the ride back and it was just horrible. It was horrible. So we did not get to really take that. We drove past um, Mr. Baratka's stand again. By this time he's in his raincoat soaked. And he's just, he sees all of us and thinking, well, that was a pretty quick trip, right? So anyway, I just thought I'd add that, just a little humor. They do, they do give, give us some kind of a little entertainment. So that was fun.
So what was worse, the ducks ride or the uh, driverless van?
The ducks ride. Yeah, because it was just miserable, miserable. I have a picture of Dale from the backside. He's sitting on the edge where the window, thankfully, he sat there and we, I did have an umbrella trying to keep it down, but I didn't want to block people's views, but they weren't looking anymore. And um, I have a backside picture of Dale and I should have had that. It's just in half. His whole, his whole backside is just soaked. And it's the side of it with his wallet. And when he pulled his wallet out and turned it upside down, it was just, it just poured out. He had everything laid out in the hotel room then to dry. That was an interesting one. Joe?
So not a whole lot to add, kind of what Larry and Paul had said. Um, takeaway is always making sure you're planning and uh, being out front. Like Larry said, shovel ready projects on the shelf, ready to go. Because some of this funding comes available pretty quick. And I know Roger does a real good job of, of being on top of that stuff. Uh, just one other note, um, this was a pretty big conference, uh, this particular one for my company. So um, most of my activities was with my company. Um, and the county didn't pay for any of my stuff for that conference because of that fact. So just wanted to make that clear. Thanks.
I would add that uh, the auction for uh, scholarships for uh, kids that are going into uh, civil engineering brought just a little over ten thousand dollars. So that's all I have.
Mr. Hallstrand.
Larry, I have a question for you. The County Old Bridge, people have been asking me when that's going to start. I thought June first, but
Uh,
I was wrong.
Now it's scheduled to start in July because there's some insect or something that's hatching and we can't get started on it yet. It's DNR holdup.
Should we hang the bird nets for absolutely nothing then?
No, the birds would have ate the insects probably.
It's, it's still, it's still wrapped.
Well, when you send that note to uh, Mr. Tiffany's representative, include a little thing about the bugs.
That's my help with the bugs.
What about the mosquito hatch?
Okay, moving on. Any, anything more for Mr. Polczek? Thank you, Larry. Land use and UW extension, Mr. Barkstrom.
Okay, uh, we held our meeting on May twenty second. We held uh, three public hearings. One was a garage forty two feet from the road center line in the town of Worcester that was approved. Another one was placing a camper forty feet from the road center line, town of Eisenstein, that was approved. And operating an auto body shop in the town of Fife Field, and that was approved. We approved uh, two land divisions, one in the town of Worcester and one in the town of Amory. Uh, Evan is working on a draft uh, of a flood plain ordinance to comply with new DNR regulations. So we'll see that soon. And the land conservation technician is working in the field to control noxious weeds, mainly wild parsnip. Uh, that would end the land use. Any questions? UW extension, same day, uh, they're working on a memorandum of understanding between UW Madison and Price County. And that draft is expected uh, in the, at our June meeting, which will be this week. Uh, we have a four H summer intern. He's, she started June second and will serve Price and Taylor County. And uh, as far as four H, a report was given describing the different activities that occurred, that is occurring around the county. Foodwise education on strong bodies are scheduling summer events. We met a Mr. Bruce Spangenberg. He's a horticulturist specialist who was working out of the normal building office in that you, the extension area. And the extension uh, director Amber Rayburg is uh, reported of a reality fair program, pro, uh, progress that is being planned for this fall. Any questions? So end of my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Barkstrom. Next up, last but not least, law enforcement, Mr. Polczek.
Thank you. We had a presentation on how THC is changing the impact on public health. Uh, Price County Public Health Nurse and Co-Chair of the Price County Substance Abuse and Medical Health Coalition gave a presentation which is on file. Categories included the difference between hemp and marijuana plants, definition of THC and novel THC including Delta eight and Delta ten. Understanding the chemical makeup of Delta eight, nine and 10. And how double bond location affects potency of THC. Uh, this was on, on the agenda because of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh seven ordinance that amended to, uh, our chapter four oh three peace and good order article. And we had, uh, a person come and, and request that, uh, we legalized the sale of Delta eight in, in Price County. No action was taken on it. Uh, we decided to let it, after listening to the, the sheriff and and the health department to just leave it as is for now. Uh, you probably all have known already now that, uh, our district attorney, Mac McElroy submitted his resignation to the governor's office and will go into effect on July seventh. He has returned to private practice is our understanding. The assistant DA who was shared with Taylor County will fin, fill in until the replacement is found. Staffing update. A new deputy completed the seven hundred and twenty hour program and is starting work for Price County on June sixteenth. One part-time applicant is in recruit school and is expected to obtain their four-year degree by the end of the year. There are openings for part-time positions in the jail. One deputy will go on military deployment overseas in Poland for one year beginning in June. In July, two deputies will be on FMLA. Part timers will fill in where they can and people will be moved around accordingly. Our sheriff is even currently doing road time to fill in. Humane officer, animal control. From January first through June fifth of twenty twenty-four, there were twelve hundred and twenty-four law incidents and animal control handled a hundred and fifty-four of these incidents or 12%. From January fifth to June fifth, twenty twenty-five, there were twelve hundred and thirty-eight incidents and animal control handled a hundred and seventy-four of these or 14%. There is an increase in humane officer control activities. Reports indicate sixty-eight animal calls, fourteen bites, seventeen animal welfare calls, eight nuisance animals, sixty-six lost animals and one cat bite. Now pay attention to these statistics. There's going to be a test later on. Our youngest, uh, canine officer Kane had surgery and was out for about two weeks. Both Kane and Dixon were recertified, including biting and drug testing before Kane's surgery and they both passed with flying colors. Donation money was paid for by, for the surgery, donation money paid for the surgery. Rec officer has been working regular patrol and recreation patrol. He's filling in as needed on the road. Equipment updates. We would like to update portable radios through special projects with Price County. The chief deputy is working to get rid of high mile vehicles, looking to put a hood under the evidence room for testing drug materials to ensure deputy's safety. The DA leaving will impact the jail population. Up to inmate, eight inmates have been housed in Taylor County this year and Price County jail is full. Obscene video update. There was an obscene video at the regular county highway department meeting. Subpoena was sent to Canada where the VPN was traced and was accepted. The next location of the VPN was Hong Kong and Price County cannot serve process because they don't recognize our court processes. Any questions? Thank you.
I just have one comment regarding the rec officer, in case anybody's wondering, the sheriff did indicate that the rec officer still will be out on the water during, uh, like holidays when there's high traffic, even though he's using him for patrol too.
Yes. And he said other officers on, on high traffic weekends will fill in also. So they, they will be out there.
Yep.
I have just a quick update for the DA's office. They are looking to bring in a special prosecutor. Um, if you were with us, what, three years ago, we had Tom Cody out of the southern Wisconsin area. Uh, he was unavailable at the beginning, but he may still help out if this process takes longer. Uh, but we have an individual that's interested, uh, from Green Bay area. And the process for a special prosecutor is the state gives you the current DA, a list of uh, acceptable individuals. And then the current DA is responsible for recruiting them to come here for that short period of time. Uh, I'm not sure. I, my understanding is the, the governor's office has released the job opening or the, the recruitment for the DA's position that would be appointed by their office uh, through a process. So we have little to know, say, in that process, we just uh, wait to see who the appointee would be.
Anything else regarding law enforcement? Okay, that concludes the, uh, chair reports. Uh, at this time we'll convene out of the committee of the hall. Before we adjourn, I'll just ask if there's any other comments anybody wants to make, brief comments. Mr. Porco.
Make it very brief. I, the, this issue of that park in Park Falls, Jason has brought it up a, a number of times. But he cherry picks what he wants to talk about. We took $67,000 roughly of assessed value off the tax roll when we bought that property. But we added over four million. And that was good for the whole county, not just Park Falls. And I think that should be, everybody should be aware of that.
I was just giving an example of how, uh, private property can get turned into state property.
That's going to happen. There's nothing we can do about it.
I will always stand for private property rights, Dennis.
Well, thanks Dennis and Jason for your input. You can carry on this conversation after the meeting if you so choose. If not, that's fine too. Okay, there's nothing else. Uh, date of the next meeting is August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five at nine o'clock in the county boardroom. And on that note, I hereby adjourn this meeting.